Set to go, okay, everybody promised not to talk too much tonight? Okay, we're now ready to start the meeting. Good evening, the planning commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and is posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV channel two and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Will you please stand and join with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Trobridge.
Present.
Vice Chair Trusell.
Present.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Flandes.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, item number seventeen, the applicant has requested that the item be withdrawn without prejudice. Item twenty, the applicant has requested that the item be obeyed to the January fourteenth, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. And item twenty-three, the applicant has requested that the item be obeyed to the January fourteenth, 2010 Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on either or either of these three items? Seeing none, Commissioner Trusell, your motion on these housekeeping?
Motion is to bring these items forward and take action as recommended by staff.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast. Motion carries. There are no consent items and there are no motion-one vote items, so we'll move right on to the public hearing items. Before we start, I would like to note that the General Plan Amendment thirty-six oh seventy-four was previously heard on November nineteenth, 2009 Planning Commission meeting and obeyed to this evening's December third, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. However, this item will not be heard tonight and is scheduled for the December seventeenth, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Anyone in attendance to hear regarding that item? Seeing none, so we're okay. All right, we'll now go to the public hearing items and I would like to move an item up. That would be item number ten. That is Site Development Review thirty-five nine eighty-eight. The applicant owner is El Capitan MHP LLC. It's a major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR twelve twelve eight, to allow three hundred and fifteen units square, three hundred and forty-eight units were previously approved, with waivers of the perimeter landscaping buffer standards, to allow buffer widths of five feet along the north perimeter where ten feet is required, five feet along the east and west perimeters where six feet is required, zero feet along the south perimeter where six feet is required, and zero feet along the sidewalk and back of curb along the arterial street Bonanza Road where five feet is required at forty-nine oh one east Bonanza Road. Staff report, please, on number ten.
Mr. Chairman, this request will decrease the number of units, building area, landscaping, required parking that was previously approved through Site Development Plan Review, SDR twelve one twenty-eight. The applicant is requesting as part of this review, waivers and exceptions of the Title nineteen landscape standards, which staff can support as they are minor in nature, will have a minimal impact on the adjacent surrounding properties, and additional landscaping is provided within interior amenity areas. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. If the application is denied, development of the site must comply with the previously approved Site Development Plan Review.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have with us in attendance?
My name is Paul Thorck, I'm one of the partners.
Oh, this one? Just need to speak right into the microphone.
Yes, my name is Paul Thorck, I'm the architect and also one of the owners of the property. Because of the situation with the economy, the way it's been, as you well know here in Las Vegas, the previous project, three hundred and forty-eight units, was totally unfeasible. We wanted to try to create a project that was aesthetically very pleasing and at the same time very affordable for people to be able to rent. And then, the other project was, which was a major podium, where all the units were on top of this podium, I don't think was as attractive as what we've recreated. This has more of a garden apartment atmosphere. We don't have the podiums, we have garages for the units. And then we still, even though we reduced some of the landscape areas, we're providing adequate landscaping and carports around the perimeter. So, the project hasn't deviated in appearance. We're trying to make this a, pushing towards a gold lead, environmentally sensitive project, taking into consideration, trying to create some economic stimulus here in Las Vegas and also the sustainable energy standards.
Thank you. So you're actually reducing the size of the project by thirty-three units or so?
Yes, by doing this, I mean, most of the time, people try to get as many units as possible to make the project feasible, but this project became more feasible by reducing the amount of units because we're able to get rid of the podium, concrete deck.
Very good. And the staff's recommended approval, but it has some conditions. Are you in agreement with those conditions?
Yeah, could they repeat what those are?
They're, in written format, there's... Yeah, there's several pages' worth of them. I would hope you have had the opportunity to read them. We could trail the item if you'd like, time to read the things, if you'd like, and bring you back sometime later in the evening.
No, I don't think it's a major...
Is it the sentence that went mail to you earlier, or is it sent to you?
Conditions are mailed to the applicant and then they are also...
Twenty-four.
These are on the conditions right here.
Okay, I think it's probably best if we just hold this item to have the opportunity to properly read the three pages' worth of conditions.
Okay.
Rather than rush you through it, we'll just kind of hold you and go sit back down and when you're ready to make a commitment, just raise your hand.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to item number six now, if you would. It is Site Development Review thirty-five nine oh three. The applicant is Youngblood Architecture LTD. The owner is Cliff Finley and Donna Finley Family Trust for a proposed twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-five square foot motor vehicle sales facility with accessory auto repair and a waiver of town center landscape, island, and tree requirements to allow forty-six trees where sixty-three are required, and waivers of Title nineteen requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer where eight foot is the minimum required along the west perimeter, and a waiver of open space requirements to allow thirteen percent where twenty percent is the minimum required adjacent to the north side of Azure Drive between US ninety-five and Tenaya Way. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed motor vehicle sales facility does not meet the minimum town center parking lot landscape and tree requirements, town center open space requirements, and perimeter landscape buffer width and planning material requirements, indicating that the subject site will be overbuilt and will not be compatible with the adjacent surrounding properties. Six parking lot trees have been added to parking lot landscape islands at the site for a total of fifty-two trees where sixty-three are required. Staff is recommending denial of the request. If denied, the subject site will remain undeveloped until future Site Development Plan Review is approved. If approved, the staff report and condition number seven should be corrected to read, an exception from Title nineteen point one-two landscaping buffer standards to allow one hundred and twenty perimeter buffer trees where one thirty-six is the minimum required. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open and turn the... Anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of the item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Richard Youngblood, forty, forty-five Dean Martin Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. And we've met with staff and we agree with staff's recommendations on the, in their conditions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I'm not quite understanding this. The applicant just says that they agree with staff, that staff recommended that they come up with all the trees. So I don't understand that. But, regardless of that, when we came up with these landscaping standards, we set there, if I remember, we hassled this out for years. And they got all their way, they got all the minimum stuff that they wanted. And now here they come back, time after time after time, and want to reduce the standards even more. And we have to, there has to be a place that we draw a line in the sand and say, no, we came up with the standards and that's the standards. If you can't build a thing, then go someplace else. I just get tired of this saying, time after time after time. The other thing is, I would think that here you have a dealership, or whether it's a dealership or a mall or whatever, when you're driving around in the hundred and fifteen degree heat, the first thing you're looking for is a tree to park under. I would think that they would welcome all the trees that they could put on the thing. I don't understand it.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I understand the concerns of, that were raised by, you know, the public comment. And staff did make a recommendation for as-if-approved. I know they, it's not staff's position to recommend waivers from the standards, but in looking at this, we're not deviating that much from the trees, we're still keeping the intent, the general intent of the town center standards. So, I would make a motion to follow staff's approval, as-if-approved, approval subject to as-if-approved conditions.
With the...
With the added condition number seven.
Very good.
Change requested by staff.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
So does that mean we just set precedence on this little stretch because...
Doesn't that mean to include the trees that were requested by staff?
Fifty-two of sixty-three.
Let's have staff reread the proposed additional condition. Our recommendation is denial, but if approved, this is a recommended condition.
The condition number seven should be corrected to read, an exception from Title nineteen point one-two landscaping buffer standards to allow one hundred and twenty perimeter buffer trees where one hundred and thirty-six is the minimum required. It's just a correction of a typo.
I like the eleven hundred and twelve.
If they're very small trees, they could probably get that.
So, just for, again, my clarification, the application says for forty-six trees where sixty-three are required, and we're requiring them to put in a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twelve, where a hundred and thirty-six is required?
Mr. Commissioner.
I'm not entirely clear.
Since the last meeting, revised plans were submitted where they added trees in and they now have, they now show fifty-two trees instead of forty-six on those revised plans.
But the requirement is sixty-three.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, a motion has been made, so please cast your votes. I...
Has it been?
Mr. Anderson, do you have a moment?
Mine.
Thank you.
Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to City Council on January sixth.
Thank you.
We now moved item number seven and companion items eight and nine. Item number seven is variance thirty-five seven fifty-eight. The applicant owner is Postand Family Revocable Living Trust to a thirty-five percent lot coverage where thirty percent is the maximum allowed at twenty-five eleven West Charleston Boulevard. Item number eight is variance thirty-five seven sixty, to allow fifteen parking spaces where seventeen are required, and sixty percent of the required onsite parking to be compact parking where thirty percent is the maximum allowed for an office other than listed use. And item number nine is Site Development Review thirty-five seven fifty-seven, is for a proposed four hundred and, or four thousand nine hundred and ninety square foot office other than listed, with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a four-foot buffer along the front perimeter where fifteen feet is required, and zero-foot buffer along the south, east, and west perimeters where eight feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of an existing three thousand eight hundred eighty square foot office building which we demolished and replaced by a four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square foot office. To accommodate the increased building area, variances have been requested for increased lot coverage and reduced parking on the site, as well as waivers and exceptions for reduced landscaping. No trash enclosures depicted on the subject site as the applicant has proposed to continue with curbside trash pickup. The combination of variances, waivers, and exceptions required for the proposed development indicate that the site will be overbuilt and will not be compatible with the surrounding adjacent developments, including a residential development to the south. Staff is recommending denial of all requests. If denied, the existing site will remain as it is. If approved, there is one added condition, that the south wall should be raised to a maximum height of seven foot, ten inches, with block or screened wrought iron. And condition number fourteen should be revised to state, lighting on the exterior buildings shall be wall pack lighting only and shall be shielded and downward directed. Non-residential property lighting shall be directed away from residential property or screened and shall not create fugitive lighting on adjacent properties.
And those condition changes are to the Site Development Review?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Douglas Lean, fifty-five twenty South Ford Apache Road, here for the owner. And thank you again for hearing us again this evening. I appreciate staff's work on that and Commissioner Quinn's work on this over the last month. I believe in your staff report this time, it should include a letter from Republic Services that was supplied within the last thirty days in regards to the trash pickup issue down West Charleston Avenue, giving their safety officers approval to that route and explaining how they continually do pick up the trash along West Charleston. The other added new conditions we agree to, and as far as the screening and lighting and all that, and I think also one other minor change to the site plan, the waiver called to allow for fifteen parking spaces, and we are now supplying sixteen, so we're really only asking for a one-space waiver on the parking. Other than that, we ask for your approval on this project and we'll answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. That's a good-looking thing. The only problem I have is with the signs sitting out there. That doesn't, it seemed to me that they could do a better job than that. Raise it up on a pedestal or something, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
None of my fellow commissioners have anything to say. I, Mr. Lean knows that I did do my due diligence over the last few weeks. I went to eleven seventeen Strong Avenue where the people are so concerned about the overflow parking of the building due west of your project. And I sat there and I watched the parking that they're talking about down the street. I spoke with someone from my, from the councilwoman's office, and signs have been ordered where there will be no parking between the hours of five a.m. and six p.m. Those signs will be carried down Strong as far as Ashby. The neighbor's concern was that it was a two-story building, it's not. The neighbor's concern was the lighting, you fixed it. The neighbor's concern was the height of the back wall, you've changed it. So with all of that said, thank you for working so nicely with us and I look forward to approving this project.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion for approval of variance three-five seven five eight with all staff's recommendations added to it.
A motion has been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
Thank you again, Commissioner Quinn and staff, thank you very much.
And there's one more, sir, which is your parking variance?
Oh, I'm sorry, there's two more.
Two more. The other one is the parking variance, which is variance three-five seven six zero. And again, you changed the flow of the parking, which is, was important, so I make a motion for approval of variance three-five seven six zero, following staff's, any added recommendations or whatever you added to that. Did you add something to that, Doug?
If I may, we need to add language that says that the variance approval is for a minimum of sixteen parking spaces where seventeen are required.
Thank you.
Correct.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. And regards to item number nine?
Moving on to item number nine, I move for approval of SDR three-five seven five seven, again, following any added recommendations from staff that I am confident Mr. Lean will follow. Thank you.
If I may to clarify, Mr. Gebicki, the condition with regard to the wall is an added condition, correct?
That's correct.
And the lighting that you read in the language is a change to condition number...
It revises condition number seven, or number...
Eleven?
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen has to do with public improvements. The lighting condition is number eleven, I believe?
There never was a condition on the wall, we added that.
Right, the wall was an added condition, we're discussing the lighting.
The light is what, yeah.
Number eleven.
Number eleven.
That would be number eleven.
Thank you.
And you're in agreements, agreeance with that, this right here, right, Mr. Lean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, with approval of SDR three-five seven five seven, thank you.
Conditions as amended.
Conditions as amended.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And all matters before to the City Council at their January sixth meeting.
We can...
Now I'll say thank you.
Now you can say thank you. Now we can return to item number ten and ask the applicant if he is willing to accept the conditions as presented in the staff report?
Yes, I am.
Okay, the applicant has indicated yes, he would accept the conditions, so anyone else in attendance wish to speak on item number ten? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Just a quick question, are, over here. Are any of those units accessible for folks with disabilities?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. They'll be the handicap standards and I have family members that have disabilities and right now I have a bad sciatica problem, so yes, I'm...
If you're not, they're not. Thank you.
Chairman, if there's no further discussion, prepare to follow the recommendation of our staff for approval of agenda item number ten, Site Development Review thirty-five nine eight eight.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
We can now move to item number eleven, master, or MSP thirty-six... MSP thirty-six three thirty-six. The applicant owner is WMC two Associates LLC for a major amendment to a previously approved master sign plan, MSP thirty-four forty-four, I mean sixty-three forty-four, for an additional wall signage within an existing commercial development with waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan Parkway Center signage standards at four forty-five South Grand Central Parkway. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the request is for five large wall signs that face Grand Central Parkway. Given the scale and the overall, the scale of the overall project, the distance from the proposed sign locations to the adjacent streets, and the minimal impact to the neighboring properties, staff recommends approval of this.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Good evening, John Layle with four ninety-five South Grand Central Parkway. I'm the general counsel for the World Market Center, Las Vegas. We appreciate staff's favorable recommendations. We only have one question or maybe a clarification with respect to the conditions of approval, all of which we accept, and that would be condition number two. Condition number two reads as follows, conformance to the sign elevations and documentation as submitted in conjunction with this request, date stamped October eighth, two thousand nine, except as amended by conditions herein. Just wanted to clarify that the elevations that we submitted as part of this application were exemplar, on-premise sign examples that we have done in the past, and that we are only planning on doing similar on-premise signage in the future.
Our condition is not with regard to content.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, no questions. I'll move for approval of item eleven, MSP three-six three three-six, upstal staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that is final action, the absence of appeal within ten days.
Fantastic, thank you very much, have a nice evening.
Okay, we now move to item number twelve, zoning thirty-six oh ninety-seven. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is from R one Single Family Residential to CV Civic at four seven hundred Chantilly Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, currently the site is a park. The proposed CV district zone change will bring the park into conformance with the existing land use of PROS Parks Recreation Open Space, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I'll make a motion for false staff's recommendation for approval.
And Mr. Chairman, the name of the park is Stewart Place Park.
Stewart Place. Are there any intended modifications to the park at this point?
Not that we're aware of.
Very good. Motion's been made. Please post. Thank you.
Counsel on one-six.
We now move to item number thirteen, zoning thirty-six oh ninety-nine. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas, is from C one Limited Commercial to CV Civic at two seventy-five North Mojave Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the current use at this location is a community recreation facility. The proposed CV change will bring the zoning into conformance with the existing land use of PF Public Facilities. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there are other comments, I'll make a motion for false staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's made, please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries.
Counsel, January sixth.
We now move to item fourteen, which is variance thirty-six four thirty-one. The applicant is the city of Las Vegas, the owner is the Sun City Summerland Homeowners Association, is to allow sixteen parking spaces where twenty-six are required for a proposed seven thousand six hundred square foot fire station adjacent to the northeast corner of Del Webb Boulevard and Sundial Drive. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this, the variance does represent a thirty-nine percent deviation from standards. However, staff can support the variance request as the parking provided is adequate to meet the minimum staffing levels for the fire station, as well as the limited number of visitors expected at the site, and recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Sam Tolman. I'm the Architectural Project Manager representing the city of Las Vegas, four hundred Stewart Avenue, and I'm also the Architect of Record, here to answer any questions.
And I'm David Steinman, Vice President of Sun City Summerland Community Association, Inc.
Thank you. Now, do you accept the conditions as presented in the report?
Yes, we accept the conditions as stated.
And I would assume that the Homeowners Association Architectural Review Board is in support of this?
They are.
Very good.
Approve it.
Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Is it gonna, this gonna get built? There was a comments yesterday at the city council that some guy with the fire department says that they're not gonna build four or five of those, the planned stations. Is this one of them?
Well, not in a position to make that determination, but it's certainly needed and will be built eventually, as to whether it'll start tomorrow or not. and will be built eventually, as to whether it'll start tomorrow or not, I can't commit. That would be my preference though. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Please.
I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the sounds of the sirens that go back and forth as these firetricks are gonna be in and out of the community there, can you explain why, or just address that concern please?
I'd be glad to. They've been coming in and out of our community for twenty years, and they're now gonna originate in our community instead of coming from the outside. We, they have procedures at the Las Vegas Fire Department, that they do not run the sirens, and sometimes not even the lights, depending on the time of day or the traffic is involved, so it will not be an issue for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steinman.
Mr. Jim? Down here.
Where are we?
Just want the commission to know, that's similar to agreements we have like in fire station ten, I believe that they have that same agreement where they don't run the lights until you get to a major street.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further comments, I would move to follow staff's recommendation and approve item fourteen, VAR three six four three one.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post. Motion carries.
Counsel, January sixth.
Everybody say it.
Thank you.
We now move to item number fifteen and companion item sixteen. Item fifteen is special use permit thirty-six four thirty-six, the applicant owner is D two, twenty-eight oh one Westwood Inc., it's a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit for a proposed eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-four square foot expansion to an existing liquor establishment tavern, with a waiver to allow a distance separation of three hundred feet, including Highway I fifteen, with a maximum right-of-way width of a hundred feet, where fifteen hundred feet is the minimum required from a similar use at twenty-eight hundred Westwood Drive. Item number sixteen is site development review, thirty-six four thirty-four, it's a major amendment to an existing site development plan review for a proposed eleven thousand seven hundred thirty-four square foot addition to an existing twenty-five thousand four hundred seventeen square foot sexually oriented, oriented business, with a waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a ten-foot buffer along a portion of the east perimeter where fifteen feet is required, staff report please.
Mr. Chairman, this request is for a proposed addition on the north side of an existing sexually oriented business and liquor establishment tavern, as well as an unenclosed patio cover on the southeast portion of the building. The addition will provide employee facilities and additional entertainment options. The applicant has requested a waiver of landscaping buffer standards along a small portion of the east perimeter adjacent to an existing driveway. This waiver request is minor in nature and is mitigated by the additional landscaping added around the perimeter of the site. The addition represents a forty-six percent increase in floor area resulting in the requirement for a new special use permit for the existing tavern use. A requested waiver of the required distance separation requirement from a similar tavern use is appropriate for the site, as it does not represent a lesser separation than currently exists, and will be separated from the similar use by the I fifteen corridor. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of this request. If denied, the proposed addition would not be permitted in the existing sexually oriented business and liquor establishment tavern would remain as it is. Please note that there are additional letters of support submitted for these items after publication.
Thank you, now I'd like to declare the public hearing open, anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, sir, for the applicant?
Good evening, I'm Winston Henderson, architect, on behalf of the applicant, we have reviewed the conditions and staff recommendations, we concur and ask for your approval.
Thank you, anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I say that they get it only if they bring our stripper mobile back.
I think that would be quite a condition. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
When staff read their comments and they said, this wouldn't create any more intense use than what is currently there, what, what will go on in this portion of the building? I mean, is this? Like back room, side room, private rooms?
No, it will primarily be a large meeting area and entertainment area, will allow them to have larger events.
See, you smiled when you said that, see?
Well, I just say that the applicant is committed to Las Vegas and is making a substantial investment.
I bet he is.
And he's confident in the future of the, the community.
Very good.
You don't draw the characters and make them come to life, do you?
Anyone else have any legitimate questions for the applicant?
I do, I just, with the addition of eleven thousand, over eleven thousand square feet, is that going to include more disabled parking for your disabled customers?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
No further discussion, I think we're ready for a motion.
Will that please, Stephen?
Junior.
Thank you.
Oh, of course, of course.
Junior, and I'm going to make a motion for approval, following all staff's recommendations of SUP three six four three six.
And with the full support of Stephen Junior, I will also support that. Motion has been made. Please cast your votes. Please post. Motion carries, in regards to item sixteen?
Moving on to number sixteen, SDR thirty-six four three four, I move for staff's recommendations of approval, following all their recommendations, thank you.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Don't forget that parking.
Absolutely.
Please post. There we go, motion carries.
Matters go forward to the City Council on January sixth.
We now go to item number eighteen, site development review thirty-six four twenty four thirty-two, the applicant is Act Quest Vegas, owner is Rancho Point LLC and thirty-nine twenty Roland LLC, is for a proposed thirty-two thousand seven hundred square foot clinic with waivers of buffer placement standards and perimeter landscape buffer standards to allow a buffer width of six feet along a portion of the east perimeter where eight feet is required, and zero feet along the sidewalk and back of curb along Ontario Streets, Alexander Road and Rancho Drive where five feet is required at thirty-nine hundred Roland Avenue, staff report please.
Mr. Chairman, staff can support the requested waivers, an exception, as the requests are minor in nature, and the development will provide adequate landscaping mechanisms to diminish the visual impacts of the parking lot. As such, staff is recommending approval of this application.
Thank you, now I'd like to declare the public hearing open, anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, which is the VA clinic, I guess, call it all these fancy names, but that's what's being built.
Yes, Ken Mc, I'm sorry, Ken McFarlane, Martin and Martin Civil Engineers, nineteen oh nine, South Jones, eight nine one four six. We don't have any objections to the recommendations.
Okay, does that mean you accept them though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. First, it's my understanding you did not meet with NARA, which is the resident neighborhood association, is that correct?
Hi, my name's Bill Huntress, I'm the owner of Act Quest Vegas LLC. This, this property, as you may or may not know, was put under contract by the United States government, I believe it was in August of oh eight, so I, I can't answer that question. You know, we designed the facility, but I don't know if the government did meet with the neighbors, so I can't answer that.
All right, and then the waivers you're requesting, if I'm understanding correctly, staff use them as minor, what exactly is it that you, show me, do you have the maps right there? Can you show me on the map exactly what you're trying to, to seek a waiver for, even though it's minor in nature, I want to be able to understand that.
The waivers that were requested are in regards to building placement, the, the typical building placement would have the rear of the building near the corner with the parking lot pushed to the east, and the, to facilitate better use of the property, the building was pushed back to this location facing the roadways. The second waiver is for the landscape buffer along Rancho and Alexander, to have a attached sidewalk rather than detached, and that's along both frontages. And the, the other waiver is in regards to landscape islands within the property, there is sufficient landscaping and they have reduced the number of finger islands within the parking lot. And then there's a, a fourth item along the east side of the property, which is in regards to a reduction from eight feet of landscape to six feet of landscape to facilitate the wrought iron fence that will be along the east property line.
So there's gonna be entrance there off of Alexander, and there's also gonna be an entrance there off of Rancho, is that correct?
Yes.
And will both be open to the public, or, or is one the primary entrance and the other one is secondary?
They will both be open to the public during regular business hours, both of them will contain gates that will be open during the regular business hours.
And what are the regular business hours?
I believe it's seven in the morning till eight in the evening.
So the gates will be closed each eve, each evening, is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
I mean, is my understanding correct?
Yes.
Now, this property is located within an area, the neighborhood association is fairly active, no, they're very active, I live right down the street myself, and I know them personally. And our, our method is, preferred method is to have the applicant meet with that homeowners association. So i- if we go forward and approve this today, Director Wheeler, this will go before the city council, is that correct?
Chairman and Commissioner, this is scheduled to be final action, but if there is a concern and a recommendation, then we could certainly request, the planning commission could request that there be a neighborhood association meeting prior to it going to city council.
And we could, we could approve it today, subject to that meeting, and then it goes before the city council?
Correct, with that condition, it would then go forward to the city council.
And as applicant, do you have any objection to that? Shouldn't slow the prog?
No, I have no objection, I, our firm is, we do a very quality job in all the projects we do, so I, I think that the neighbors will be happy, I mean, obviously, it's, it's a very important user, the veterans administration, and it's gonna be a high-quality building, both from the interior and exterior, so.
And personally, I like what you've done, I like it, I think it's gonna be a good addition to that neighborhood, but I also think it's important to at least see the individual from NARA and to make sure that they understand what's going on, they, they live there, they have a right to know and, and meet with you to see, see what's gonna happen there. So that would be my, unless there's any other comments by the, the commission, I would make a, a, a motion to approve, subject to the conditions of staff, and also the added condition that you meet with NARA i- before this goes to the city council.
If I may, Chairman and, and Commissioner, the standard condition would be to require that the applicant hold a neighborhood meeting prior to the city council meeting, that would be pursuant to our standard procedure. And also, recommended condition change to number two, is that the development should be in conformance with the site plan, landscape plan, floor plan, and building elevation, date stamped ten twenty oh nine, for a structure not to exceed thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-three square feet, except as amended by conditions herein.
And are you comfortable with that, is the applicant comfortable with that?
I, I didn't hear the, what the number was it?
It's the number on the plans that you have submitted, dated October twentieth, and that is thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-three.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman? That's Brian. Since this was due to be final action, Margo, do we also need a condition required to go to city council?
No, it would just be that the, the condition would be to hold the neighborhood meeting prior to the city council, and then I will indicate that that goes to the January sixth meeting, and with that announcement, it will do so.
Okay, motion has been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes to council on January sixth.
We now move to the director's business, item number nineteen is DIR thirty-five nine twenty-nine, it's a progress report by the planning and development department regarding input received at public input meetings for corridor and walkable community plans. Staff report please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, as you'll recall, back in March of this year, we introduced our concept of doing walkable community plans and corridor plans here in the city of Las Vegas. We gave you an update on the areas that we had selected to start working on in June, and what I'd like to do this evening is just give you a little bit of information about some of the public input that we've received relative to the three plans that we're working on. The first walkable community plan that we have started is the Village Square Walkable Community Plan, which is the neighborhood that's located at the intersection of Sahara Avenue and Fort Apache. We held a neighborhood meeting with residents within the plan area boundaries back at the end of August, and while turnout was slight, those who did attend the meeting did have some very interesting comments about walkability of their neighborhood. What I've done is listed the three top comments that we received from those who attended the meeting relative to their neighborhood. Number one was the desire to complete the sidewalk network within the neighborhood itself. The second comment that we received was relative to installing additional crosswalks, and then also to make the existing crosswalk safer. And then third, one of the ideas that was presented to the residents that they supported was the idea of reducing vehicle lane widths in order to reduce the speed of traffic and to make walking within the neighborhood safer. Another thing that was brought up by residents is with the grocery stores and shopping areas right there on the principal thoroughfares, there are multifamily residential units located immediately behind those, but separated from them by tall perimeter walls. One of the things that one of our residents said at the meeting was, you know, it would be a lot easier to walk to the grocery store if I didn't have to go half a mile all the way around in order to get there. And so one of the things that we're going to be looking at is the possibility of having secured gates between residential properties and commercial properties, in order to allow residents to walk to necessary services much more easily. And so that's one of the things that we're investigating as part of that plan. If I could go to the next slide, please. The next public input session we had was relative to our West Charleston corridor plan, we held that meeting in September, and we had approximately thirty-five property owners and business owners turn out for that meeting. Some of the input that we received there at that meeting was relative to reducing travel lane widths in order to provide greater sidewalk widths there along Charleston Boulevard. Another comment that we heard from quite a number of the individuals there at the meeting was relative to the design of existing median islands. Some of the issues that some of the business owners were facing is that it's difficult for their patrons to access their property because of the location of islands and their driveways, it's obstructing access into their driveways. And so one of the things that they asked us to do at that meeting was to look at where the median islands are, and if we could do anything to improve the access to their properties. And then third, another comment that we received was relative to landscaping, the idea of improving landscaping and adding landscaping in medians to beautify the corridor there. So those were kind of the top three comments that we received at that meeting. Moving on to the next plan, the Meadows Walkable Community Plan, this is the area that's located just immediately south of the Meadows Mall, the residential neighborhood located there. We held this meeting in about the middle of September, again, turnout was not what we had hoped for at that meeting, but the councilwoman did attend, and also, I believe, Commissioner Truesdale was also there, in addition to a number of residents. The comments that we received at this neighborhood meeting, one of the important comments that we received was relative to the fact that there isn't a sidewalk on the south side of Meadows Lane, and that was one of the desires of those who attended, was the installation of a sidewalk there. Also, another problem that was identified is access from the south side of Meadows Lane to the mall site itself, that there really isn't a crosswalk for pedestrians. One of the issues that residents pointed out is that it really does become a safety issue for people as they're crossing there, that without crosswalks, there isn't really controlled access or safe access for them. And then the last comment, the last comment that I've got here for you, is relative to within the neighborhood itself along Bedford, that sidewalk should be widened, and also the need for shade trees there along the sidewalk in order to provide protection from the sun for pedestrians. With these three plans and the public input sessions that we held, despite the fact that we sent out notices to all residents and property owners within the plan areas that we had identified, we also sent notices to all of the registered neighborhood associations within the plan areas, turnout for those meetings was really not what we had hoped. And while we did have excitement from those who attended, who wanted to see improvements to the walkability of their neighborhood, or the aesthetic appeal of their corridor, to the walkability of their neighborhood or the aesthetic appeal of their corridor, we didn't really get the involvement that we had wanted. So one of the things that we are currently working on is a plan for better public participation from residents of these three areas and business owners from these three areas. Since we have held the neighborhood meetings, our staff members are currently working on proposals to address the initial concerns that we had, and so what we want to do is we want to have greater input on that draft that we'll be returning to them. What we are intending to do is to hold a second neighborhood meeting, or series of meetings actually, with residents of these three planned areas in January and February. And so what we're going to attempt to do is to engage the residents and business owners within those areas and to get greater input in terms of what they would like to see and what improvements could be made to those areas. Because really, for these plans to be successful, we do need the buy-in from those who are within the planned areas, and we want to make sure that we are providing them with the necessary sidewalks, the safety features, street trees, aesthetics, that they really want to see there. And so that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them at this time.
This was just a briefing on the update, so if any of the commissioners have any discussions or points they'd like to bring out, now's the chance to do it. Initially, when you presented this idea to us, you had several areas within the valley that you were going to look at. There are some areas up in Ward Two and Ward Four, around the Sun City Desert Shores area, as well as the Lakes area, that to a non-professional appeared to be highly likely areas that the Walkable Communities Plan would have applicability to, and I wonder is the status of those areas?
We haven't started on those areas yet. What we are doing is we're working on these first two areas for walkable community plans. We are trying to really get an assessment of how does this process work and what the document is going to be like. As I had mentioned, again, one of the things that we didn't anticipate was, we thought we would have more public input than we got, and so that's one of the things that we need to refine in this overall process, is how we're going to do that and really engage people. So these first two are kind of our test drive, if you will, in terms of developing a walkable community plan. And then, as you've indicated, there are other areas throughout the city that we will be going forward with walkable community plans, once we kind of have these two first ones finished and developed to such a fashion that I think is appropriate.
Good, thank you.
Flynn, when was the meeting for the Meadows area? Because I get all my mail and I don't ever remember seeing something like this, because I would have loved to have attended.
I believe it was the end of September, September 30th, I think, but I'm going off the top of my head there.
We'll make sure that the planning commissioners.
Yeah, I'd like to be informed for, you know, for future, because I love the idea and I love all the work you've put into it, and I would have attended that had I known about it, so thank you.
Certainly, we will do that.
To Flynn, with regards to getting more people out to the meetings, I know it's obviously in these times, it's, you know, cost for everything, but there's been a couple very good campaigns that have been run by neighborhoods in opposition to certain things, where they put like campaign signs throughout people's yards, along pathways, along public streets, that do garner a lot of excitement, angst, I mean, but I think people understood the importance of meetings and they got energized. I think in these areas, since we're trying to define specific areas, it might be a way to think out of the box and be a little more over-invited with regards to a sign program, even if people think it's a potential problem in their neighborhood, at least they get there and they get to hear what positive things are potential for those, since these are well-defined areas. I mean, I don't, I know you can't do this community-wide at times, but I think like that Bedford area there along the Meadows, I think people really pay attention to what happens there and they get energized. The Lakes area, I think too many people get so much in the mail these days about the world coming to an end, or maybe it's not coming to an end. I think it's better to be out, if you're walking, you'll see the signs and read them or at least let your dog, you know, have his way on them. But I think that might help out to get the, because I think it's important to get the involvement from the neighbors, because this really is their chance to say, we may live in an older neighborhood with a lot, without having some of the planned community elements, to really say, what can we do to make this where I want to, I want to encourage family members to move in and walk this area and do those things.
And Chairman and Vice Chair, that's what Flynn was talking about, that we realize we've got to do a better job of that, we're exploring a whole variety of different options. I think you bring up some, I mean, everything from churches to existing community events, cultural events, things that go on in the parks, signage is a possibility, we can all color. It's a major issue for us to get greater involvement, and that's really why the question, where are the other ones? We want to make sure that we've got the right involvement and we are putting the correct amount of attention and neighborhood involvement on these plans before we move forward with others, and then learn how to do a better campaign of getting persons involved, and that's what we want to do with these plans.
And so you will let the planning commission know about those, because I've got some friends like Marty and Pam, they'd love to be there, and I'd like to be there.
We'd love to have Marty and Pam.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion, then we can move on to item number 21, which is a text amendment 36494. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas is to amend Title 19.14.130 to clarify when master sign plans are required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this item is to clean up our master sign plan language and also to clarify the purpose of our master sign plans. In some instances, our master sign plan process has been used as a way to do essentially variances from our signage requirements, and that's not really the intent or the purpose. One of the things that we do with this is clarify that the master sign plan is intended to essentially serve as a way for coordinating the signage on larger parcels of property, as it states in the text itself, that that's 15 acres or greater. And so what we're really looking to do with a master sign plan is to establish basically an aesthetic plan of the signage for the entire property. In order to do that, one of the things that we have added to this amendment is to state that a master sign plan must at least meet the minimum sign standards applicable to the zoning district. So if this property is within the C1 district, it must comply with the signage regulations for the C1 district. Another thing that we have done is stated that if a variance is required for signage, the process by which you do that is applying for a variance rather than going through the master sign plan route, again, to clarify what the purpose of a master sign plan is. And then also, we've added language that states that planning commissioner or city council may condition a development to have a master sign plan, and so in those cases, a master sign plan would also be required. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Thank you. I believe this does require a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion has been made, please cast your votes. Please post.
And that goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Now we can move to item number 22, which is text amendment 36495. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas is to amend Table 2 of Title 19.04.010 and Title 19.20 to modify the descriptions and definitions related to motor vehicle sales uses to exclude motor scooters with an engine capacity of less than 50 cc from the applicability of the motor vehicle sales-related standards. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, this text amendment is intended to bring our zoning code into conformance with NRS relative to regulations that apply to mopeds. What we have done is added a definition for moped that's consistent with NRS and also with the DMV. Also, we state that a moped may be sold under a general retail license, it doesn't fall under the category for motorcycles or automobile sales, and then also clarifies that a moped has an engine size of 50 cc's or less, and we would request your approval of this proposed text amendment.
Thank you very much. We do have to have a public hearing, so I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Flynn, with regard to this, I understand what, you know, bringing it into conformance with the argument, is there anything in this that would allow those general retail users to provide, then turn around and be a service provider for motor vehicles like this?
Actually, no. Service falls under a different category and they have to conform with the requirements, so no, the answer is that they would have to go elsewhere in order to provide service and to the appropriate zoning district to provide service.
Okay. Then, if there are other comments, I'd make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion has been made, please cast your votes. We now move to these.
That goes forward to council in ordinance form.
Mr. Chairman, before you move to the next question, I believe there was a vote, I think it was agenda item number eight, which erroneously recorded an abstention of mine which should have been a yay vote, if you could correct that accordingly, thank you.
Thank you, we'll correct the record. We now move to item number 24, which is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Anyone in attendance wish to speak, please approach the microphone. This formal line there to the left, all of you. Okay, seeing none, then we'll have to declare the public participation portion of the meeting closed, and that concludes our meeting and we'll adjourn. Thank you very much and good evening.
Oh. Steve?
What was that?